So, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission for Wednesday, December 7th, 2016. It's 7:00 PM. If you'll rise and join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, we have an executive session that will immediately follow the regular meeting tonight. We don't anticipate we will need to come back into regular session to make any decision. You want to do the roll call, Ms. Ricks?
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Iad?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg is absent. Commissioner, or Mayor Holliday?
Here. I guess we did that backwards. Oh, well. So, 3A, 16 dash 704, recognition of Commissioner Rocky Smith Jr. for his years of public service on the city commission. Are we going to do this out there or from here?
That's up to you. You can do either one. We have my...
Let's just do it here. Okay? So, as you all know, or should know by now, Commissioner Smith has served eight years on the Oregon City Commission, and by our charter, his term limited. So, this is probably the last official meeting, because it doesn't look like we're going to have our scheduled meeting in December. And we do have a work session and a couple of other things coming up, but this is the last opportunity that we will have, at least for a while, to recognize Commissioner Smith's outstanding service on the city commission and all of the things he's done. Certainly Rocky has been, he's been a friend of mine for years and years and years, and has done just a yeoman's work, especially in the areas of tourism and historic preservation. He goes to every, or as many as he can, of all those different organizations, and there are a ton of them. So, as I said earlier, it's going to fall onto the other commissioners to pick up that slack when Rocky is no longer here, at least in this time period. So, I wanted to personally thank you for your service. I've certainly enjoyed working with you, debating with you. So, you know, you take me places that other people can't take me, and that's important to have people around you that can do that. So, I just want you to know that I appreciate that. This is a plaque from the city. Says, "Presented to Rocky Smith Jr., City Commissioner, January 2009 to December 2016, in grateful recognition of your service and dedication to the citizens of Oregon City."
Thank you.
So, if any of the commissioners have something to say, now would be a good time for you to do that. Commissioner Shaw?
So, we got an opportunity here, previous to the meeting, to talk a little bit to Rocky. So, we had quite a conversation then, but just as far as the commission goes here, Rocky, I really appreciated you not only kind of being here for, being by my side here the last two years, so that I could have somebody to say, "Well, no, this is the way you should do that." So, that's helpful. But then watching what you've been doing the whole eight years, and now realizing how much work this is, I've learned to appreciate you even more, so that you could do this for eight years, so...
Specifically didn't tell you about that other stuff.
Yeah, I know. That's right. That's not in the manual. Yeah, it's not in the manual. But I think that the city's in a lot better place with your assistance here, so I appreciate everything you've done. And I know that we'll be seeing you in the audience, or if you're smart, you'll be home watching it on TV in your jammies.
I'll be sitting right by William.
Yeah, that's right. You know William will be back there. But anyway, but hopefully you're going to remain on some of the committees and stuff you can, and be an advocate, continue to be an advocate for the city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Iad?
Yes, Rocky. It's been eight years.
Eight years.
I remember the day that you came into City Hall eight years ago and registered to run for the city commission, and I had never met you before, being kind of new to Oregon City myself at that time. And it was, it's been eight years now, and I just, I still can't believe it. But I can't really talk about eight years in 60 seconds here, but there were, there's a couple of takeaways that I'd like to give to you. And the first one is two, actually, there's two awards that I want to give you. The first one is the generational award, okay? And it's represented by this tree here, and because it's, you know, like a family tree, you know? So, there's the first generational award, and it's for passionate roots.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Ooh.
Many people love this city, but no one loves it like you.
Thank you.
And so, thank you for teaching us all of the value of our history and how much we appreciate it, the past while we go into the future. So, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
The second one is, it's an award for convictions. And it's evidenced by this little cute little turtle here, because you know, a turtle is steadfast, right? And that reminds me of you. Even when I occasionally disagreed with you on things or your viewpoints, I still respected your steadfastness and standing strong in what you believed. And it's that, it's that character trait that I want you to remember by with this little turtle. The other, the other thing that I wanted to remind you of...
Last time somebody did that, we got in trouble. I'm just telling you.
No, we didn't. You got in trouble. This isn't a banana.
Okay, so, and lastly, you know, I have to admit that there were times that I just wanted to, how do I say it?
Flap me?
Strangle?
No. Shush you. I just wanted to shush you. But on the other hand, on the other hand, you had your way of making your points very clearly, and in that, I appreciate you. So, thank you, Rocky, for reminding us all to stand strong in our convictions, to listen to the people, to respect Oregon City's history, and to act in the best interest of the city as a whole. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right.
Staff?
Speak for, I know a lot of the staff has a great appreciation for your leadership, Commissioner Smith, your insight, your enthusiasm that you bring, your strong sense of community and place and historic character and tourism and arts. And I think you'll see your fingerprints all over what have happened in this community over the last eight years and what will happen over the next several years as we continue on with things that you've put into motion. I think that hopefully the community realizes what a great leader you've been. You've always been a good leader, and you've had that chance to do it on the commission for eight years, and I fully expect we'll continue to see you doing that moving forward, even though you won't be up here at the commission. You'll get to be on the other side for once. It'll be fun.
It'll be fun.
So, and I said a little bit earlier, I really do appreciate just the, it's more than just working together. We spend a lot of time on working on hard issues, and I've just really appreciated having the opportunity to really get to know you and work with you, and we've done some pretty good stuff. And just want to say thanks.
Thank you.
And wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Bill?
I expressed a little of this to you earlier, that it's easy to have ideas about how to make places better. It's easy to have complaints about what isn't working. What's hard is to get out and put that out in public and say, "Here's what I want to do," and really take that step, that leap into public service. And it's, you know, the type of work that you do is really the foundation of how our governments work, and you know, any city would be proud to have someone who is as passionate, who has done as much for their community as you have. And I really appreciate watching that, and I think, as Tony said, your fingerprints on a lot of things that have changed for the better here in Oregon City, and you should really take pride in, take pride in that.
So far, Rocky hasn't broke down yet, so that's... No, I will later, maybe. I try not to.
Hey, Chief, you want to reiterate your comments that you made earlier?
Sure. The, so, Rock, I want to say...
You're not touching this.
Just put it up there, so people can see.
You just told me not to put stuff up there.
When do you ever listen to me?
That's true.
So, one thing that I want to say to reiterate what some people have said about leadership, people throw the word leadership around a lot, but leadership is a lot less common than the word. I think that the thing that I've seen is, you have opinions regardless of who, I'll say it this way, you do what you think is the right thing, no matter who you're going to offend. If there's, I see in the city, you know, people who, there will be a group who feel strongly about a certain thing, and if that group, on a different topic, if you're with them on one topic, you're not going to be with them on another topic just because you're with them on another topic. You have always done the right thing for the right reason, and I've admired that about you, and that really is a leadership trait. I did say before about your unending support of the police department and what that really means to people who do the job for a long time, and when you stop, you grew up as the child of an officer, and you know what it's like when Dad or Mom goes to work. And imagine the community did not support that. Everything that goes on at home, the stressors that everybody has at home, knowing what Mom or Dad are going to at work, you've known that, and I think that that is part of the support that you've always shown us. And that support, why that is so vital is because it keeps good people in the line of work, protecting the city and doing the things to make the city as, the livability as good as it can be. And without saying too much, your support and the emotion that I saw and felt from you during the Levkey incident, which was a, you know, probably the most significant thing that, when I leave public service, that will be the most significant thing, I think, that I've ever gone through. And I'll never forget seeing you walk in the door for the first time when I was still stinging, and your emotion, that literally, I remember that picture of you, and I'll never forget it. So, thank you.
Mr. Lewis, Mr. John Lewis, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, two things, Rocky, that stand out that I wanted to mention. One, people have talked about you wearing your heart on your shoulder. For me, it's the transparency piece. I've really appreciated that from you. You know, there have been issues where, you know, we've learned that that's not necessarily where the commissioner would like to go. You've done that in a respectful way, and we've been able to talk through it, come to a way to get to where we want to get to, which is the improvement of the city. So, I've just, I've really appreciated the transparency that you bring to the organization. The other thing is, you know, just your passion for history and Oregon City history in particular. You know, I've only been here, living in this community for about 14 years now, but I didn't move here for the history necessarily. It's not necessarily something that I, but learning that and watching your passion has been inspiring to me, and I've, through that, I've paid more attention to Oregon City's history and what's important. And, you know, having, having you here for the last eight years, there's others that care a lot about Oregon City's history, but I think you're the most passionate about that that I've ever experienced.
Alice might argue with you on that.
Probably. But those are two things for me in particular. There's others, but those are the two that I really want to mention that I appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ricks?
My two things are passion and dedication. I agree with the passion part. You're not only passionate about the community and the people sitting next to you on the commission, you're passionate about each one of them, but you're also passionate about not just the police department, but all the employees. We appreciate the support and the passion that you bring and how much you truly care about each and every one of us. That has meant a lot. And then also your dedication. I think I can only remember maybe once or twice you missing a meeting. You are so dedicated. You read everything, you prepare for everything, you, you know, attend all the meetings. You're just very, very dedicated to your job because you are so passionate, and I love to see that be brought to the commission.
Thank you.
Ms. Turway?
So, it's hard to say anything about you without, again, highlighting your passion for historic preservation in this city and how much that has done for the city and supported all of our departments, especially community development and the planning division. It's been so helpful and so nice to have champions like you. You know, it's funny, we're having a staff meeting, and we're talking about the commission, and all of the staff agreed in the planning division that you are so thoughtful when you make decisions on planning-related issues, and they all highlighted the same comments that you take the time to read the reports and think thoughtfully about what we're bringing you. And honestly, when they get to the city commission, they're always very complex and tough, and you ask the right questions, and we really appreciate your service to the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Parnell?
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Looks like it's going to be unanimous, because I'm listening to all the folks in the room saying a lot of the same things, and these are the things I was thinking as well. Thank you for all that you've accomplished on our commission, your passion, you embody passion as far as the community, and I think beyond that, you know, you're kind of a caregiver for our kids, you're a historian, you're the one that reminds us when the big football rivalry is going to happen, you're the one that reminds us what's going on in the community all the time. I think no one really demonstrates that passion for the community like you do. It's been an honor to work with you. I've been here for four years, and I know my line, when people say, "Hey, do you like being here?" I say, "Yes, because everybody's so down-to-earth and passionate here in Oregon City. It's all really on the level and really great, and you just embody that." And I want to thank you. Yeah, congratulations.
So, normally, I wouldn't do this, but in this particular circumstance, if there is anybody in the audience that wishes to say something, Commissioner Smith, please raise your hand, let me know. Father Time?
Santa.
Never gets old of me.
It's right and just that everybody gives you kudos for all the stuff that you do, because you do a lot of stuff. Your love for this city is profound and deep, and this city appreciates you. That's all been said with all the same words again and again and again, so I'm not going to repeat that. But what I want to say is, I just cannot believe that this is the end of your service to our fair city. I think you love us so much that you will continue to care for us and help us, and for that is what I'm profoundly appreciative of. Thank you, Rocky.
Thank you.
Mr. Pauli?
Uh-oh, hang on.
Did you guys know you already went, right? You already had a turn?
Yeah, but we were just getting warmed up.
You did get on TV.
Yeah.
Well, Rocky, it's, I think it's very important to have good role models, and you have been such an excellent role model of what a commissioner is. And I think because of that, you can see in this last election that we didn't have anybody that ran just on one issue. People were well-rounded, they cared about the community, they, you know, you're a good role model. I think you've demonstrated that. So, hopefully, you, I mean, you've set a good tone, and the city will continue moving forward in that, and all your work has definitely paid off. So, you will be missed, but we know you'll still be around, and I'm sure you'll be asked to be on different committees from time to time.
I already have tonight. Give me a couple things.
I hope you choose a good one, and take some much-needed rest in time, too.
Thank you.
So, you've given a lot to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Naly?
Over the 16 years I've served on the commission, Commissioner Smith and Mayor Norris were the longest-term people on the commission I've been, I've served with.
How many years stuck for you?
I think he said six, not 16.
Six for you and six for Alex.
No, but how many years did you, how many years did you serve total?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. I just want to know what I'm trying to...
I think Dan Holliday was responsible for the term limits that made me sit out two years, but in any case...
No, 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 no. I was merely responsible for putting the term limits back that had been there since 1844.
So, that's why I'm leaving, too. I have to know, 16 years, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, that's when I got a break. Eight done. Okay, sorry, Tom.
The characteristics that have been spoken to here, I've recognized as well, but the point I really wanted to make, and that I appreciate so much, was that you would come in maybe with a certain opinion on something, and after a period of time of discussing it and talking about it, you reevaluated that opinion, and I think, I think that's a credit to anyone that actually sees the evolution of things and recognizes things that might not have worked out at one point would work out in the future, and you've been great in that. Thank you very much, Rocky.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work.
Anybody else? Thelma?
Yes, Thelma.
Thelma Hagan-Miller, not a resident of Oregon City, but I can tell you right now that Rocky and those of us in the tourism industry have only just begun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thelma.
Notice she has a turtle necklace.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Rocky, some of the guys down at the barracks at the Marine Corps Reserve asked me to come down here and deliver a few words, but after looking at these words, a lot of them are four-letter words. So, I'm just not going to deliver those. Anyway, you've done a lot. You've done a lot better job than people say you did, okay? But you've got...
Thank you, I think.
I just picked that up out in the hall, and they were, and they were just leaving. So, anyway, the point of it is that you've kept local government sane, as sane as it possibly can be. And you know that local government, half of it is from left field. I mean, you come down to a meeting and you say, "Oh, this is going to be great," and you get hit with a tsunami or something, you know, I don't know what the mayor, Mayor Dan calls it, but anyway...
That's a four-letter word, too.
Yeah, right. You're closer. But really, you've got the soul of an artist, and that says something, because it, you care. There was a movie made called HUD, and the gist of the movie was that Paul Newman just didn't care. He didn't care about anything or anybody, but you do, and that's a compliment. And how you make it through that Oregon City High School and 3,000 kids up there in the hallways and stuff like that, and everything that goes on in high school, kids' activities, I'll never know.
Snow days.
But, you know, really, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to mail these words to you, if the post office will let me, and you make up your mind whether or not you want to frame these or not. The United States Marine Corps salutes you, and, because, you know, we talk about the people that are on guard saving this country, you know, and guarding this country, but you people here do as much to guard democracy at the local level than the men in the uniform. We talk about for, you know, the first responders, well, you guys are first responders in my judgment. You know, you're in the trenches, and you're doing things that other people won't do. So, anyway, God bless you.
Thank you.
You betcha.
God bless all you people.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, so, I'm going to make one final comment, and then I'm going to turn the mic over to Commissioner Smith. A lot of things have been said. Like I said, Rocky's been a friend for many, many years to me and my kids, but I think one of the takeaways is that sometime in 20...
Sorry, sorry.
It's all right.
Hold on.
Sometime in 2040 or 2044, there'll be a kid that's sitting up here on the city commission that was inspired by Commissioner Smith having served as a teacher in the high school and on the city commission. And I think it's real important that we understand just exactly the connection that that possibility has had, because Commissioner Smith's at the high school and here, and I know that I've heard from, from many, many kids, including two of my own who went through his classes, that he genuinely cares about his students, and they pick up on that stuff. Kids are like dogs. They, you know, they can smell the fear, they can, you know, they see the loyalty, all those things. And so, I think it's important that we recognize the contribution you've made into generating a new set of community leaders for Oregon City, so thank you for that, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So, it's all yours.
All right, well, I, I thought I had a lot more time. It came fast. It came really fast, and, and I know that Katie's probably gotten really sick of me the last two weeks of, "Which is my last meeting? When's my last meeting?" Because we were maybe going to have a meeting on the 21st, and I wanted to be prepared for this meeting. I wanted to be able to tell people what I thought about them and express that to them, and, so, I had a meeting with Tony at 4:00 that I said I can't get here in time, because I was still writing cards, and, so, I didn't plan what I was going to talk about tonight as I wanted to. I actually, this is ridiculous, but a few weeks ago, I started going through minutes of the last eight years, just to kind of remind myself of some of the things that have happened. And I won't be able to talk about everything, of course, and I want to mention a couple just of my memories from the last eight years. And I thank you so much for the photos that we're applying earlier. There's, I've been looking through photos, because tomorrow's my birthday, and it's my 40th birthday, so this is a big week for me. This is a huge celebration, and I have a party this weekend. Was excited about tonight, and now knowing I don't have to work tomorrow because of the big snowstorm, I'm enjoying that. And so, I'm going to just ramble for a little bit. I won't make it too long. I'm probably not going to talk to each and every one of you, because I tried to write what I wanted to say in a card that I gave to all the department heads and the commission. So, the department heads I gave you, I didn't know about the cake or the other Erma Tinger house stuff, but my friend Holly, who is here tonight, is an amazing artist, and she painted this picture of the Erma Tinger house, and so, I wanted to give each of you on the commission, one of those, and the rest of you got that image on a card. So, I want to thank you all. I enjoyed working with you so much. I was shocked about the amount of people, and I read this before, but I worked with three mayors, Alice Norris, Doug Neely, Dan Holliday, nine city commissioners, Doug Neely, Daphne West, Jim Naceta, Kathy Roth, Betty Mum, Carol Pauli... Nine city commissioners, Doug Neely, Daphne West, Jim Naceta, Kathy Roth, Betty Mum, Carol Polly, Brian Shaw, Nancy Ide, Renata Engelberg. Three city managers, Larry Patterson, David Frazier, Tony Conkle. Two city attorneys, Ed Sullivan, Bill Kabeisman. Two public works directors, Nancy Freshauer and John Lewis. Two community service directors, Scott Archer and Phil Lewis. Community service, or excuse me, community development director, three, Dan Drenlaw, Tony Conkle and Laura Turway. Finance directors, David Wimmer and Wyatt Parno. City recorder is Nancy Ide and Katie Riggs. Human resources director, Jim Loeffler. Only one, but that's good. I, I told, well, I'm gonna go back to him. Two police chiefs, Mike Conrad, Jim Band. And two library directors, at that time Scott was overseeing the whole department and the library and Maureen Cole. So many other people that I've worked with too in the city. I, I know I can't tell you all of those people tonight, but I, I thank you all and I will tell you that I'm a different person than I was when I started. And I, I think that, you know, people that run for city commission and people I talked to that ran for city commissioner, mayor before I did. And you ask them, well, what is it like? And you can't tell people. It's not something that you can, I mean, from the sidelines and the way that we as the public think it is. You can't explain it. And it's, it's, I, I had a conversation with Frank O'Donald and, and other people and, and there's this moment. And I've had this moment, I, where you, you know, run for office, you get elected and you think, what did I do? What was I thinking? And that never goes away. There is that moment all the time that you think, you know, is this worth it? Because it's extremely hard and, and for a person, all my jobs are hard. I, I, I was thinking tonight, I, I worked at a, at Dornbacher Children's Hospital for a year with, with kids that I lost on a regular basis and, and that was one of the hardest jobs I've ever had. I work with students at the high school and that job is so hard. This job is extremely hard. And it's extremely hard if you wanna do a good job. And so I, I just thank you all because I know that this city is a different place than it was in two thousand eight. And all these people on this list were part of that. You know, this, this idea that there's turnover and, and, and different people being here, but all these people were here for a specific time, for a specific reason, so the next person could be here and keep carrying on and making sure this city gets better and better. And it is. You know, I loved, I loved Oregon City in two thousand eight. I've loved Oregon City my whole life, but this is a cool city and it's getting better every day. And so I wanna thank the mayor first. I, I, well, I'm gonna tell you this. He kind of mentioned the last couple of weeks that he might miss me. And I, I also got half a hug, which I think is more than anyone else has gotten from him.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Including maybe his own family. What I love about Dan is that I could say stuff like that. And I could say stuff to him that probably no one else can. And he can say stuff to me that probably no one else can. And that's why I love him so much. He, he cares about Oregon City just as much as I do. He really does. And, and I have known that for years. And so I'm glad that you're the mayor of this town and I know that it will, what? For the moment.
I'm trying to maintain my emotional state, okay?
You, you are doing a good job. I think this, the city is in good hands with this commission. And I really appreciate all the work that you've done because it's not just even serving as mayor all the other years that you've put in and so many different parts of the community, school board, commission, everything. It's, you've been involved a long, long time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, I am so happy you're on the commission. I, I was, you know, the standard that you had set in the commission that was here in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, set a very high standard. And I know a lot of that was Alice Norris at the time, mayor. You know, how, what the expectations were of people coming into this position or just being a staff person. It was, I think, in a lot of ways, when Oregon City really started to change for the better. And I think it's always been good, but there were, there were some key people in the last few years, I'd say Doug is one of those as well, that really started shifting the viewpoint of the city. And you being the, the city recorder at the time, the, the threshold of, you know, all the old documents and all the way that, I mean, the storage at the police department, all these things that have been dealt with and, and the appreciation of saving that history, which is an incredible history in itself. But the organization and the, the, the care of that and, and understanding the importance of that, that record of the, the city's history. And so I know that there are several people on this commission that understand the importance of the city's history and that will continue to advocate for that. And I really can't think of anyone else that I would rather have filling in for me when I leave.
Thank you very much.
I'm so glad. We have, you know, a lot of people, I, a lot of people talk about running for city commission. And, you know, but actually do it i- is a whole different thing. And you have, I'm just glad you did. And I, I think someone that pointed out, you know, having two city commissioner candidates running unopposed shows that people knew these were good people, that these were the right people to have on this commission. So Nancy, I'm so glad you're here.
Thank you.
Renata, I was. You've missed it a lot. It's been, it's been kind of a crazy evening. It's been a lot of fun.
Yes.
It was perfect timing. I wrote you a note there and gave you a, a painting that my friend did of the, the Erma Tinger House. But I feel the same way about Renata being, you know, I think one of my biggest fears leaving the commission was what's gonna happen? Who's gonna run for city commission? Who's gonna be there? And when I found out that those two were running unopposed, I was so relieved because I knew we were gonna be fine. I knew that this city was in good hands. And, and at the crucial moment, I think, for you to come in with your expertise in economic development and all of that, where, which is greatly a focal point right now in this city. And also both of you have taken an extreme interest in, in tourism and I think that's, you know, the next big thing in Oregon City. So I thank you both and I, I've enjoyed working with both of you. Brian, optimist. I have a hard time. I, I talked to my students the last couple of days. I very seldom describe myself as an optimist. I, I, I'm, I'm in the optimist club. I occasionally go to meetings. Most of my family and friends would say I'm a pessimist. I, I think I'm a realist. I always expect something to go horribly wrong. And so I overthink things way too much. And, but being a part of the optimist club, I think I joined the optimist club in the, right out of high school, college, and I've been part of that group ever since. Worked with Brian a really long time. And if there's anyone sitting up here that cares about kids as much as I do, it's Brian and, and the people that have been part of the optimist club and working in this community. And so again, couldn't ask for a better person to be up here. And you gotta keep an eye on the mayor for me. And I just.
You were doing so well, Rocky.
I just appreciate you a lot and I, I really, really do. I, I wish I could get to optimist club meetings more, but I'm at school way too early and I, it's just hard. But let's see, who else? I, I just, I don't wanna take all night, I'm sorry. I, but I wanna thank Bill. I, I, you know, I've, having city attorneys that can explain really difficult stuff that we have to deal with on a regular basis and know what they're doing and talk about and be able to make, give us the information that we need to make some really, really hard decisions. Really hard. And you have done it in such a great way. Always available to a, and answer questions before or after meetings or anytime anyone needed something to be explained or, or, or anything. And Ed the same way. And I, I hope you pass that on to him if I don't see him, that, of course, working with Ed as the first city attorney that I worked with. So I. Tony, I will say most of the same things that you said about me. I, I just really enjoyed working with you and I, I, I am glad I feel comfortable enough to have the conversations that we have had. And I, I, I'm so happy. And I think Tony's one of the perfect examples of one of these things where I think there was a time and a reason for you to be where you're at. And I will, I've told this to Tony, but if you go back over the eight years that I've been on this commission, the most tragic and the most difficult and the most, the hardest times that this city has seen in the last eight years, he was in charge. He stepped up in so many ways and so many times after the shooting of Officer Lipke. And, you know, really was a strong leader through that. I got to witness his leadership and, and, and a lot of other people, as did the mayor, during the landslide. And take, being able to be off school during that break and be able to spend time at the EOC with staff and, and, and really see that process and what happens in a community that's dealing with an incredible emergency. Where I got to see you work and I got to see John work and I got to see Martin work and the police department and emergency people and, and public works and it was incredible. And to know that the people that are exceptional leaders and department heads in this community on a regular day are even better on its worst day. And I, I just, I know that, I know that that was your training to be where you were at today. And I'm so glad you're here and I think the climate in this city and in this building and throughout the departments has, has changed for the better. And Laura, you know, filling in or moving into that seat, I think, was, was not, was, was a, was a perfect thing. I think within the school world that I work in, you know, anytime someone leaves, you think, so we hire people from outside? And, and sometimes that's the right thing. And a lot of times we as commission have that conversations, department heads and city manager have those kind of conversations. And in the last few years, we have, well, for actually quite a lot, we've decided the right person's already here. And, you know, there was times I thought, gosh, are we sure? I'm absolutely sure now. I mean, all the people that we have put into positions that were on staff were there waiting for their, their turn. And, and I am just so impressed by all of you and that, John goes for you as well. I, I have enjoyed working with you a lot, have learned a lot. And the amount of things that this city is dealing with. Like I, I, I had this conversation with Tony. I've been in this city my whole life. I, I, I've seen so many commissions. I've been to, I was going to commission meetings as a high school student. I don't remember a time where a city commission in the last, you know, the last probably three or four commissions have dealt with more stuff than maybe the last ten commissions before it. I mean, it's absolutely insane how many things we try to tackle and we do an excellent job. Wyatt is another perfect example of that. Finance, and gosh, you know what? The financial stuff is so boring, actually, but.
I was waiting for that.
He is, I'm sorry. Now you really hurt his feelings. He said that he had some gold-like budget packet that he was gonna present me and I don't know what that was about. I, I want you to know that on those meetings that we have where the commission gets to meet candidates for jobs. And I met you for the first time and I knew that you needed to be the one that was hired. Now, of course, we didn't make that decision as a commission, but the right decision was made. And when I first met you and I, you do this every day. You are so positive and so nice. And you, you treat everyone so amazingly that everyone wants to be around you. I, I enjoy working with you so much. And I think that, I, I just hope you could stay, you know, forever here, or at least until I get back. No, I, I just appreciate you so much. You care so much. And I think everyone said that. When someone cares so much, you can see it and you know it's not fake. It's not fake, is it? And Katie, oh my gosh, Katie, you had huge, huge shoes to fill, huge. And you're doing a great job. And I, I, I mean, putting up with all of us, Tony the same thing, all the, all the staff in that office. Where we, I, I don't know how many times I text me, what, what time, what, what am I, you know? We are so busy running around and there's so many things and, and we, it's hard to remember all the things. But Katie's was always available, both Kates were always available to respond back to, yeah, you're supposed to be here at this point or, or whatever, or are you sure you're gonna be here? Those kind of things and it's so needed, especially when I'm at school all day dealing with so much stuff and then trying to redirect. So I, I appreciate that. And they're always so welcoming when you come into the office and, and, and just really gracious. And Jim, sometime I'm gonna have to have a lunch with you or talk with you more, but I, my dad was here tonight. And my dad hates going to any social thing at all. Including family things. I think he's been in this building three times. When I got sworn in, maybe when I got re-sworn in and tonight. And he kinda hit in the back. And this is a conversation I'll have with my dad. He doesn't know, he doesn't really fully understand the impact that he has made on my life and why I do what I do. But growing up, as you pointed out, in a cop family, knowing that your dad was out on Christmas or on whatever day, doing what he had to do or what he was doing as a job, not knowing if he was gonna come back. My mom having to deal with that. My sister marrying a police officer, an Oregon City police officer. My sister's best friend marrying an Oregon City police officer. It's my family. And I know there's been several situations in the last few years and even more where things have happened where it just hits you. And, and, you know, I, I. And, um, and, um, you know, I, I, um, can't explain the amount that I appreciate you and the work that you do. Um, and, um, knowing when I was elected in two thousand eight, the desperate need for police in this town. Um, that hadn't been addressed for years and decades, um, was inexcusable. And, um, I know that we're in a better place now and we have hired so many people. Um, we're in a perfect situation and, and to kind of the icing on the cake tonight to, you know, realize we're this close to having a second school resource officer, which is one of the things I was talking about eight years ago and to have that happen this year, um, it's needed. And, and I, so I thank you for everything. I thank the department and everyone for all of their work protecting all of us. Huh, um, Phil. Um, I haven't got to know you very well. I, I had, um, so we, we went to Fort Vancouver, um, and, um, as we know, we have part of Fort Vancouver in, um, our city at the McLaughlin House and, um, we were invited out there, a couple people and Nancy was there as well. Got to talk with Phil a little bit. Um, and I have a lot of expectations. Um, I, 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 I'm really excited. There's a lot of great things going on in the Parks Department with the Parks Foundation. Maybe I'll get involved in that.
Yes.
But, there's a picture in front of you and it's of a house.
Uh-oh.
And, um, we need to open it at some time and so I may be coming to talk to this commission at some point about that and, um, it's a very important place. And, um, so I know that you were, you know, just coming into this job and there's so many aspects of it, um, but, um, definitely, um, understand the importance and as I think you know of the history of this place and the history of the things that are in our parks and, uh, the history of the buildings and, and the things in this town. Um, and take good care of it. Um, thank you, everyone in the audience, uh, for being here tonight and, um, I don't think I need to say anything more. Oh, God, I'm so sorry, you guys, I'm taking so long. I'm gonna do a couple more things. I'm sorry.
I always know when Rocky says I'm done, that there'll be a couple more things.
I really wanted to talk about, okay, just a couple big memories that I, I, you know, and like I said, some of them were so hard. That police procession for Officer Lipke was the hardest thing that I've ever had to be a part of. It was so incredible, um, so mov- moving, um, something you never wanna have to do. Um, and I just remember, um, standing there at the college and seeing, I don't know how many, it was three hundred, four hundred, five, a thousand police cars. I don't know how many it was. Um, I think actually the procession, when it finally got to Portland, the end of it was just leaving the college. I mean, think about that. Um, I, it was, um, I was glad to be a part of it, um, but also not. Looking through those pictures tonight, I was going this direction, but there were so many funny things up there. Um, Alice is gonna kill me for this, but that picture of Alice with a chisel, chipping a big chunk off of the promenade for its celebration to kick off the groundbreaking of the promenade and then the contractor saying, um, we're not restoring that part. After she just, I don't know where that piece is, but it, there's still a gap there where she chuck- that, it was amazing. How many people get to walk over the arch of the Oregon City Westland Bridge? And me and Doug got to do it. And, um, were we the only one on the commission that went to that?
Yeah.
The only ones that went up the arch.
Um, so the commissioners, when, when the bridge was closed, um, the commissioners for both cities were invited to take a tour of the bridge. There was a, Benny Mum was there also. Um, there was scaffolding hanging from the bottom of the bridge, so we got to walk out through all of that. We got to walk up to the top of the bridge, um, which I'd only heard stories about. Um, and I was so amazed by that opportunity. Um, I'll never forget it. There was several city commissioners from Westland. And, um, there was a moment where the, um, construction company contractor said, um, would you like to go inside the bridge? And I was like, well, yeah, yeah. And so a few of us went in. We lost several Westland counselors at that point. We go into this, into the arch of the bridge, well, not the arch, the, the lower part of the bridge, there's a, there's a, there's a door, trap door that we went through. So we're in the bridge and, um, you get to this point where you, and I say you, I don't know who's ever done this. I don't think anyone's ever done this. I mean, that's how important this was. And, um, there was a ladder that went down towards the river in the arch, all the way towards the river and it's dark, you couldn't see what was down there. And I was standing there and looking down there and I was like, thinking to myself, do we get to go down there? And, um, I think one of the gentlemen said, well, does anyone wanna go down there? And the, and I, I, I remember Doug looking at me. Several of the Westland people said, oh, no, no, we don't need to do that. And I was like, and Doug looked at me, he's like, what are you thinking? I'm like, we have to go down there. How, I mean, we have to go down there. Who gets this chance? And so it was just us that got to go down there and, and, um, I will never forget it. Um, what an iconic piece for this city and, um, it was so meaningful for me because, um, and I may have told the story before, when I was three years old, I went across the Oregon City Westland Bridge with my grandmother. My grandfather worked at the Westland Paper Mill. Every day we drove across the bridge, I told my grandma, this is the ugliest bridge I've ever seen. And, um, right, and so she, um, said, well, you know, you need to do something about it. Well, I was three years old and I called the mayor of Oregon City, who was my grandma's brother. And, um, I said to him that the bridge was ugly, he needed to do something about it. Well, of course, the bridge is a state bridge and Westland and Oregon City and had had discussions about the state, it had discussions about doing stuff with the bridge, but I don't know how it happened, but multiple years after that phone call, the bridge was painted and it looked better. Um, but when I ran for city commission, knowing that I would be on the commission when that bridge was fully restored to be the most beautiful bridge in America, um, that was a big deal. And, um, the celebration for that was so important. Twenty years trying to save the Irma Tanger House, twenty years of my life. Um, and, um, I'm so thankful for people that supported me in doing that and making sure we saved that house. And, um, because there was moments as a kid where I was not sure that would ever happen. There was moments, I remember working at the Carnegie Center where we joked about maybe someday that building would be restored. And here it is, you know, all these buildings. Um, and so, um, it's been a lot of work and, um, I just know that it wouldn't have been done without the support of staff and the commissions that I've worked with over the years. And, okay, that's enough. Thank you.
You're sure.
Yeah, I'm sure. Thank you. Do we still have more?
Yes.
I guess there's a-
We still have more.
Jonathan, sorry. I told Jonathan-
So, uh, we, we have three annual updates tonight and I had a discussion with the city recorder about this and this won't occur again all in one meeting. So, um, first up, we have the Citizen Involvement Committee Annual Update to the City Commission, uh, sixteen dash six fifty-nine. Uh, Ms. Will Height.
I promise I'll be brief. I only have twelve pages. Just kidding.
Is that Dan brief or Doug brief?
Exactly.
Those are different things.
This'll be Dan brief. Mayor brief. All right.
Rocky brief.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for letting us present our annual review. We've had a great year. Um, I think that we've done a lot of good things and I think a lot of that is in part thankful that we have Tony and Laura, who know, through all the changes that have happened in the city this year, they've stuck with us and they're still there and that means a lot. And to have Commissioner Shaw coming to our meetings, that means a lot. I hear a lot of the people say, it really feels like a two-way communication because you have that representation. And things that are shared at the meetings go back and forth both ways. So, again, thank you for, for your time. For those of you who don't know, the Citizen Involvement Committee meets once a month on the first Monday of the month. And usually our agenda is, um, we have public comments. We haven't always had that in years past where we, um, where we set aside a dedicated time for public comments. Most of the time there aren't any, but occasionally there are and it, it's a good, it's a good thing. One of the most beneficial parts of the meeting is having our roundtable where the, the members get to share what's happening in their neighborhood and the city shares what's happening. You know, that's a time of great support for each other because I don't think any peop- any neighborhood would make it without the other neighborhoods. And if we were just left out there on our own, you would have twelve, okay, maybe ten, there's probably two that would still go, keep going, but probably ten defunct neighborhoods. So that's a very important part and we've had some great presentations this year. I think having Laura be able to know who to ask that we might not even think of to ask has been very beneficial. We hear from, um, John Lewis is there every month. That's a big piece because, as you know, traffic is important. When a road gets shut down, we all hear about it. Whenever anything's going on, we get a call, what's this, what's this? And just like we asked John, he's like, let me ask the right people. We have that opportunity to ask the right people. So Public Works is a big piece. Um, we've had Metro come, we've talked about the marijuana they came and presented. It's nice to have a place where you can come and get all of the information to take back. So I think that's very beneficial. Um, the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, you know, we hear that over and over, but not everybody gets to and sometimes we forget that. That we forget that if you're not here at a city commission meeting or planning meeting, and sometimes people don't even know that that's an option. But as representatives from the neighborhoods, when we come in here, then we can take it back and share it. And I think that's, that was, been very helpful. Um, we've learned a lot about building and land use this year through various presentations. Um, a fun thing that's been happening the last couple months is the Girl Scouts have come to talk about Ladderette Park and the work that they're doing. And that's fun. It's fun to see kids getting excited and trying to make a change. And so, and we can encourage them to go to the parks. I'm sure you've heard a lot about that, Phil. But it's, uh, it's been a really nice thing. We spent a lot of time this year working on a public involvement plan. We had a subcommittee that met and we completely overhauled. Laura and I went down to Salem and met with their team. They actually have city employees dedicated to their community involvement. And we walked away from that thinking, we got a pretty good thing. Even though they had dedicated staff, we were doing a lot of things that they dream of doing or that they're trying to implement. And they had a huge manual for their public involvement plan. And Laura and I read through many cities' public involvement plans that were, you know, forty-seven to sixty pages. And I thought, that's not a living document. That's not something that you can use. And so we came up with a public involvement plan that I don't know how many pages it turned out to be, but it's a living, breathing thing that we can use. We can use, the neighborhoods can use it, other people can use it. So I think that was a big thing that we did this year. We also, I, um, asked everyone and we wrote it, we voted and agreed that we would each go to at least one other neighborhood meeting throughout the year. Because what happens is you see how your neighborhoods run and you just kinda think that's how everybody is and it's not. And Oregon City is so different in its different neighborhoods. There's different needs, there's different, and so when you go to another neighborhood, it helps build that unity because you can see what's important to them too. So I think that's been very beneficial. It's helpful to get a, a feel of what else is happening in the city. We also have, we made a strong presence. We have a booth at National Night Out and then at the Safety Fair every year. And that's a fun thing to have a big map. And we ask people, where do you live? And we point out which neighborhood they are, hand them a flyer, here's your neighborhood, here's your meeting. Some of them we've tallied to see who comes from which neighborhood and it's fun because it's not the same at National Night Out, who comes versus the Safety Fair. So that's kind of a fun thing for us to do. So we're trying to get out there. We have, I go every month and sit in on the Community Development Stakeholder Monthly Meetings. That's been a, a neat thing that you, there's a lot of, there's architects and builders and contractors that come and get to talk firsthand with the city, with the planning department, the building department, Public Works. I, you know, kudos to the, to you guys and to the city staff for wanting to be involved with the public. And I think that the CIC, we feel that and we appreciate being involved. We, um, have someone that will sit in on the, um, Ability Mobility Standards Process, the Community Advisory Group. We, um, members from the CIC assisted at the Marijuana Regulation Open House and at the Willamette Falls Legacy Project and throughout, whenever they have tours down there, CIC members have been asked to help. So I think that we have a really good group regardless of problems that are s- forever going to be occurring in the neighborhoods. The CIC itself, I think, is, uh, been a really great thing this year. We're continuing to move forward. And I would have to put my plug in, when you meet to do your budget, maybe look at those numbers because if you look at the public involvement plan, and I know that people say, oh, those postcards aren't worth the money. But without the postcards, we'd have nobody at our meetings. However, there are bigger pieces. There's more ways that we could reach out. There's other things we would like to do besides just the communication piece that's part of the public involvement plan that we can't do with the current amount that's given. So, I'd like to put in a plug for a little more money for the neighborhoods and maybe change the wording of what we can use it for so that it's not just about advertising and getting people to our meetings. But, thank you very much.
So, I, I want to say something and that is, um, when I first became mayor, um, there was a, a tension between the CIC and, and the city commission. And I wanna say how much I appreciate, uh, not only you, but Tony and Laura and the rest of the staff and Brian in, in working to make that commission, actually, that committee actually work. Um, and, and you and Karen Maury have been a, a, a great set of leaders for that. Um, to be able to turn that around to where it actually is working and, and, uh, so I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate that.
It feels like, where, I tell people, it feels like we're back to where we had been, um, before the strife and before the issues that came up. And a, a large part of that does have to do with the support that we feel from the city, the staff and the commission, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, uh,
Sure.
I think I was on-
Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, um, Chair Will Height has, uh, kind of raised the bar of that, uh, of the, uh, neighborhood associations there that, uh, even though the, uh, there's been some tension there and there still continues to be, she can, she, she can take that and honor it, but still continue on in a positive manner with this group. And, uh, I've got to, uh, uh, say just a great job on that, uh, Amy, for, for continuing with that and, and, um, uh, continuing to raise the bar for that group there and stuff. It's, it's, it's a great group now. I mean, it's, uh, just kinda going there and you can see the, uh, interactions between everybody now. And, um, a lot of problem solving going on there and, uh, so continue to do the great job, so.
I remember starting out the year and I brought in the book, Who Moved My Cheese? Or however that goes, and that was kinda how it was and bring it back around and appreciate that.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
So I gave you that as a punishment, Shaw, so now what am I gonna do?
I know.
We need a-
What else you got for me?
Regional wastewater.
Yeah, man. I think that's a good one. Frank's not here tonight. He's getting on the wastewater.
Next up is, uh, the Natural Resources Committee Annual Update, uh, Committee Director, uh, Development Director Turway, uh, and I believe Mayor Neely has that.
Yeah, this fits true, Neely. And, uh, if I might take just a minute, a couple things about Rocky Smith, if I might. Uh, I wanna talk about emotional support. Uh, when it came to going up in the Arch Bridge, I think Rocky was a little bit, was a little bit concerned about heights and I am, have real claustrophobia issues and I supported him going up and he supported me going in. And so I, I really appreciate that. Um, I wanted to make, uh, an, an, an- I wanted to make, independent of this, some of you might be on the commission five years from now. Two thousand twenty-two is the hundredth anniversary of the building of that bridge.
Yes.
It's a Condi Arch Bridge. Condi was noted throughout the world in terms of arch bridge constructions. Ours was the second, and it was the first that actually had the arch bridge extending over the street level. The other one's still, the first one still exists, Youngsbay Harbor, Youngsbay Bridge there outside of Astoria. But the arches are just supports to the street. If, you may not know, you know there are arches there. So I think it'd be a great time to have a major celebration for that particular event.
It's also either the same year or right around the same year as the hundredth Oregon City Westland Football Game.
It's coming. Yeah. So the battle of the bridge is going to be more significant. The other thing is that, thanks to Rocky, I discovered the cran vodka drink. I never had one before.
I'm going to say that.
You want me to say it?
I was going to say, you need to try a lemon drop.
Oh, lemon drop, okay. When I saw him order one, I referred to a girly drink, but then I ordered one, and I have one on us every two weeks or so. And so, thank you, Rocky, for bringing this into my cran vodka drink. Now, I might start my presentation. You should have available to you, perhaps on the screen or something, a couple of reports we had. One actually lists the various activities from the, from the, what should I say? The Natural Resource Committee, original one was, kind of fell apart depending on who you were talking to, there were different reasons for it. We got it reestablished and came back to us in, I think, two thousand twelve. And we've had great relations, I want to state this from the forefront. Tony Conkle, when he was Director of the, in the Planning Department, and Laura Turway subsequently have been great supporters of the Natural Resource Committee, and I think we've had some tremendous progress since that point. And I, boys, and I just wanted to thank both of you for your commitment, and also Pete Walter for the rigorous staff person necessary. But both Tony and Laura had gone to our committee meetings on various occasions and been very helpful. There's a last year's overlook. We've, we had been given information on development at Canema Community College, and particularly on terms of the Environmental Learning Center. I think a lot of you know that it's going to be, that whole area is going to be redesigned to be an effective stormwater facility as well as to be a, as a natural feature. And we have been involved in that project. Several of our people are involved in salvage activities. We're going to have to bring equipment into that site, and it requires removal of vegetation, and several of us have been involved in salvaging that material to bring it back at a later point. We did an overview of the Natural Resources Overlay District and the Geological Overlay District, and looked at the tree regulations that exist. We had, we had John Runyon, I think you've met him, perhaps he's spoken to you from the Cascade Environmental Group. He's the person, that group is a group that is responsible for identifying mitigation sites for the Harbor Natural Resource Damages Assessment, the Superfund Site, and looking specifically at the Cove as a possible restoration site on its, particularly on its west bank and north banks. We've had presentations of McLaughlin and Canema Trail Project. When they put forward the grant, we wrote a letter of support of the grant proposal to Metro. Presentation of Public Works and a site tour of the site, and unanimous support for the development of that particular site, and a letter of support to that effect. Presentation by the Oregon Parks Foundation for a grant that they had submitted for major improvements at Waterboard Park, and we sent in a letter of support for that effort. We've had regular updates on Willamette Falls Legacy Project, the public access, and we've had discussions about wetland regulatory concerns at Canema. We also receive any, by email, any of land use applications coming before staff or the Planning Commission, depending on the type regarding, in areas that involve natural resource, resource overlay district areas or geological hazard overlay districts. I'd like to spend most of my time to talk about activities that we're proposing for the coming year. We feel that we need to update the city's water resource, steam, wetland area, the overlay areas. The state has, the state has identified additional streams since the, since that mapping occurred in nineteen ninety-nine by the city. And we think they ought to be looked at, particularly some areas of Canema, and also with the South End Beaver Creek and Park Point Concept Plans coming forward. We made a presentation to the Planning Commission, and although there wasn't any vote, there seemed to be unanimous support to reviewing those, the, the, the Natural Resource Overlay District. We're, we would like to be involved in education of habitat improvement involving what we're referred to as Metro Title III lands, and they, they are the basis of our Natural Resource Overlay Districts, but also Title XIII enhancement. These are the upland areas. And one of the major problems is, the city has very strict regulations in terms of tree removal, mitigation in terms of trees that are within the building site, and mitigations that are, of trees that are outside the building envelope. But it's very difficult to come up with policies in terms of, before these areas are annexed in, how, you know, how do we guarantee that there are any mitigation, that they don't get cleared off right before, before any kind of land use approvals come forward. We want to assist in developing connectivity between the Quackamas, Willamette Rivers, the Cove, the environmental, the, excuse me, the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center and the Rossman Landfill Site. That area has designed for a regional, sometime in the third year, a regional trail system that would actually extend all the way to Beaver Lake on an icy road, and that should be part of it. We've expressed some ideas to Public Works, which they, which they put forward. There's a large box culvert that goes under Highway two thirteen, and also basically a bridge on Union Pacific in which a stormwater facility comes through. It has very high clearance. I can walk under it and have two feet above me. They, I believe Public Works has talked to both ODOT and also Union Pacific, but they're not the easiest entities to work with. And I got a nod from, from, in that regard.
Certainly Union Pacific.
Well, also, also ODOT. We're looking forward to increasing our involvement in the Lower Harbor Trust Fund as that goes forward in terms of a mitigation site. We want to increase our communications with nature, nature, with, excuse me, with the Neighborhood Associations, the Involvement Committee, and the business community as well. Look forward to potentially having some joint partnership meetings, and we've had these discussions already with the Parks and Recreation Committee. And on issues, for example, like, looking at the inventory for the, for the Natural Resource Overlay Districts, having perhaps some additional discussions with the Planning Commission, depending on what they can do in terms of their agenda. We want to increase our participation with Arbor Day and Earth Day events and cooperation, and also cooperation with the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council and Friends of Trees. We're also interested in preparing materials in About Street Trees and the Heritage Tree Program for distribution to the public. Very few trees have been nominated by the public for heritage trees. We've had one of our members, Dorothy Dollsford, who's been, who's made presentations to the Citizens Involvement Committee, I believe, and also presentations to Neighborhood Association, pressing on the heritage tree nomination process. And people can nominate their own trees on their own property, but they can actually nominate trees on public lands, too, and I don't think people are particularly aware.
I have two of them. I'll work on that.
Very good. We want to, and we want to prepare educational material about street trees and heritage trees for distributed to the public, which I've just mentioned. One of the items that we'll be putting forward to you, may, well, forward to you in terms of your goal-setting efforts, is something that would require some funding. We've got many streams that come through Oregon City. Many of them are unnamed. But we feel that on, at places on the collectors and the major and minor arterials where the streams go under, people don't even know they're there. And to actually have, they don't have to be big signs, but signs that give the names of the creek where they are. We've identified the, what we regard as the priority creeks, although there are many, many more than this. Abernathy, Coffee Creek, Singer Creek, Newell Creek, and Coffield Creeks. Those are major ones that we would think would benefit from signage. One thing that really wasn't on our list that we discussed, but I attended part of the last commission meeting, and the discussion came in terms of the boat ramp. And of course, the Parks and Recreation Committee expressed the same concerns you had. You were presented with three options there. We are, I think we will be recommending a joint tour, Parks Recreation, Natural Resource Committee, the City Commission, take a tour of that site. I think there are other options that are possible there, so we'd like to suggest that for the upcoming year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks for your help, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay. Finally, we have the Planning Commission Annual Update. Chair Kidwell and Ms. McGriff. Vice Chair McGriff, I apologize.
While Charles is doing that, let me correct my friend and colleague, Doug Neely. It's Condi B. McCullough. It's a McCullough Bridge. Condi is his first name. He's an engineer.
Okay.
Charles Kidwell with the Planning Commission, the chair, current chair, serving with Denise and Damon, Zach and Robert and Paul and Tom. And I've enjoyed working with this group for the last three years. It's been a real productive group. We don't always agree on everything, but we always have good discussions and usually on most issues come to a consensus. And it's been a real pleasure working with this group of commissioners. I also want to extend thanks and appreciation to the Planning Department staff, and it's been a real pleasure working with Tony Conkle since I've been on the Planning Commission. He's been spectacular. I had no idea what I was getting involved in when I joined the Planning Commission. Tony kind of helped lead me through that, and I appreciate that a lot. And Laura Turway's been really great to work with, and I appreciate all of her helpfulness. And the planning staff in general's been real good to help us kind of keep focused on what the issues are that we need to be addressing. It's really easy for us to get off into the weeds occasionally, and they'll help pull us back onto the path, which is always helpful. We've, since I've been on the commission, we've dealt with a lot of pretty important projects. And one of my favorite is the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, and that's kind of an ongoing thing, so I can continue enjoying that as we go forward. But we've also dealt with a couple concept plans and some master plans, and a lot of things that are dealing with neighborhood areas in the city, especially when we've been dealing with annexation and new development. We've had quite a few issues come before us that have brought out lots of citizens that have had a lot of comments, and people have raised concerns and brought to our attention their particular concern about how that project was going to affect their neighborhood. And rather than going through all of the projects that we've dealt with over the last year, I really just wanted to bring to your attention some of the issues that we've heard from the citizens and that we've dealt with, and some of the things that were, in many cases, the biggest challenges that we had to consider as we were going through these different items on our agenda. Traffic and transportation is an ongoing concern, and it's almost every issue that we deal with has a traffic or transportation component to it. And depending on where you live, that may be the most important thing in your world. And some people make a special point of coming to the Planning Commission just to let us know how important that is. So I think the main concern that people have is, there are, there's a lot of pass-through traffic that goes through Oregon City. It doesn't originate here, and it doesn't stop here. It just goes through. But we're the beneficiaries of population around us, and we have some real serious concerns about what I would call pinch points. There's some intersections in and around Oregon City that create a lot of anxiety and angst among the citizens, and that's where we hear the most complaints. And so, we want to bring that, give that some special attention, and we'd ask that the City Commission would take a hard look at that. Infrastructure is always an issue. Every, every proposal that comes up, is there adequate services to support that project or that annexation? So that's a special area that needs consideration. And we have the reality of the urban growth boundary that constrains development. And the thing that I've figured out since I've been on the Planning Commission is, all the easy sites for development have already been developed. And so, basically what we're left with is the hard sites. And what that means is, we have difficult issues that are associated with most of the development that's coming downstream. Geotechnical considerations is a big part of that. Landslides, flooding, drainage, wetlands, all those issues need special attention, and we would encourage the City Commission to look at the considerations of, especially landslides and wetland issues, as an important criteria for your agenda. And then finally, the tree canopy in Oregon City is an important consideration, and Mayor Neely touched on one of our concerns, is there's a lack of regulation for developers who decide they want to clearcut their property before they come to the Planning Commission to get approval of their development. So at that point, it's a moot point. The trees are already gone. And, you know, I think it would be worthy of consideration of some restrictions on clearcutting a property prior to coming in for application for development. So these are all issues that we've been faced with over, not just the last year, but the last several years. And some of these go beyond just city of Oregon City. They require multi-jurisdictional coordination. And I know the Willamette Falls Legacy Project is an example of how we're already doing that. So I know it's feasible to do. It's just a matter of, we have to have a mindset that that's a way that we can solve some of these issues. And so, I'm going to have Ms. McGriff address some of these in a little bit more detail. But those are the considerations that we've had over the last, not just this last year, but the last three years that we wanted to bring to your attention.
Charles, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners and staff. I think I speak for all of the Planning Commissioners, although they're not all here, although a couple of them are still back there. Thought we almost had a quorum tonight. I was getting a little nervous. I was getting a little nervous. I want to say again that it's been our privilege and our pleasure to serve the citizens of Oregon City. And as you know, we have a lot of work that we have to do. And unlike Charles, I did know what I was getting into. So I appreciate the fact that our staff has been very diligent. We, what I really appreciate about working with the staff is that we do challenge each other. They bring up things that we haven't thought about, and we sometimes bring up things to them that they haven't thought about. And there's always a good discourse about those issues. Staff has been very considerate and helpful to us when we come up with, sometimes I'm sure they're thinking, oh, my God, they're coming up with another wacky idea. But they look at us with professionalism and courtesy and say, yeah, we're going to look into that. We're going to get back to you on that. Yeah, we've thought about that, but gee, thanks for bringing that up. And I can't tell you how rewarding that is. And also, you know, we're all thinking about it. It's something that's on our minds all the time. As you know, it's hard work, and don't let the easy demeanor of the Planning Commission and the fact that we get along fairly well. And again, as Charles said, we do have disagreements with each other. But I think the thing that I find the most pleasurable about it is that we can agree to disagree, and then we come to consensus. And that is a really good working relationship. And I appreciate the other Commissioners so much. And, you know, sometimes when we run into each other outside of commission, you know, it's just like nice to talk to them and say, hey, you know, I really appreciate that point you made. It was really great. I thought about it. And you know, hey, you had a point there. So as Charles said, there are things that we have been thinking about. And I know that there are probably things on the staff's agenda that they're going to bring to our attention, and just some of the stuff that I know we've talked about over the last year, besides the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, which we're all very excited about too, as well, is that updating the, as Doug said, Water Resources Overlay District. Again, you know, we need those areas for stormwater. We need those areas to have the water go through and not stop and back up into other people's properties. And so I think that's something that we are also in agreement that we would look at. Obviously, the geotechnical material with all the new LiDAR maps, I think that's really important that we definitely take a look at that and making sure we're on top of that. Pete and Laura have been really on top of that and bringing those things to our attention. I think another thing that we hear about continually in our meetings, and again, Charles alluded to that as well, is that we have people coming to our meetings that are talking about livability issues. They're talking about connectivity. They're talking about traffic calming and how we make our city more livable, more pedestrian-friendly. On my way over here tonight, I had a flashlight with me as I crossed the street, and hopefully you didn't hear it, but the guy slammed on his brakes. I mean, it was just, you know, it's, and he was speeding up Singer Hill. So it just makes us a little nervous. I think something else that we would like to work with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee on is that, as I've had some discussions with Phil already, the Parks Master Plan is severely out of date and needs updating badly. And there's a lot of work that's going to need to be done there by not only Planning Department, but Parks and Recreation and Community Services. So that's something else. And, you know, there's always the typical plans and policies, and then the things that come up that we don't always anticipate. But I think, as I alluded to before, we have a fantastic group of people, and they are willing to work hard for you on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mengerberg.
I wanted to thank the Planning Commission for being on the front lines and working through the tough issues, balancing the greater community needs versus the individual needs of a developer or a property owner. It's tough, and I really appreciate the work you do, and especially the great work you did in terms of streamlining the code to make it easier and faster for our citizens to work through some of the issues. So just want to say thank you.
And I as well, and you've probably heard me say this many times, that is the one place that I hope to never serve is the Planning Commission.
That's why we all did this.
I served on the school board, and I feel kind of that way about the school board too. But, you know, the level of detail and the deep as you guys go into some of these things is just not my forte. So I have a great appreciation for people that have the patience and the ability to sit through there and do that hard work that has to get done so that it doesn't come to us. So I wanted to say thank you for that.
I think we're a little patient.
Commissioner Shaw.
Well, yeah, I was going to say that too, because I spent a couple of years on planning. And I know, you know, so I really respect everything you guys are doing, and Bob and Paul and back there and stuff too. So, but I would like to request maybe from Public Works that we get Denise one of those safety vests. So when she's out at night, we'll take care of you, Denise.
I actually do have one. One of those bright orange vests. But maybe, I think I need a Paul Revere lantern.
Well, safety vests don't fix stupid. So, you know, there's always that.
Appreciate all your efforts and stuff.
If I could just say one more thing, and conclusion is that the one thought I would like to leave you with is that there have been many, many times when, as the Planning Commission is hearing issues, we say, we don't have the authority to do that, or we can't answer your question about that, or whatever. And there are a lot of issues that really go back to the City Commission. And so we get to an endpoint to what we can deal with. And so whatever you can do as a City Commission to help clarify policy so that the Planning Commission has clear direction on how to deal with some of these difficult issues, the ones that we've already talked about. And frankly, there's some areas that need some financing. And so there are some costs associated with these issues that we've talked about. And the hard part is for you guys to say, we're going to dedicate some funding for that issue. And I know, you know, fixing some of these problems is not an easy thing to do. If it was, it would have already been done. And we joke from time to time in the Planning Commission that we'll just put a toll gate at each end of Oregon City to pay for all of the stuff that needs to be done. That might not be a bad idea. But in any case, we know that some of these problems are not going to be solved just because we want them to be solved. It's going to require our will to do it and some money.
There are two people that I neglected to thank, and one of them is Carrie Richter, who sits with us through all of our machinations, trials and tribulations. And I'm sure sometimes, like I said, she goes, oh, I don't know how they came up with that. But she's really, she's been very helpful to us, and we certainly appreciate that. And then last but not least, I need to thank Tony. We do miss you, but I'm sure you don't want to come to another meeting. But anyway, we appreciate all of your work with us when you were Community Development Director, and you were sitting there with us and talking with us and helping us work through some situations where, you know, it looks like we were tied ourselves up in knots, but then we figured out how to pull it, and we came to some decision. And it, you know, it makes all the difference. You know, again, we, you know, we like the fact that we challenge each other, and that's good. We don't know everything, but we all have something to learn from each other. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Greg.
And if I could just say real quick, I'd like to thank Chair Kidwell. He is, will be leaving us after the end of this year. I think he, as you heard tonight, he speaks eloquently. He is an excellent architect and brought that to represent the city on the Planning Commission. Helped us through three concept plans, multiple infrastructure plans, a TSP, code updates, land use applications that come in the door, and always ran a meeting thoughtfully. He listened to folks. He listened to the other Commissioners. Kind of helped wrangle the cats to get to a decision. So I just want to say it's, it has been a pleasure working with you all these years, and I'm sure we'll see you around in the community. So thank you very much for all your hard work.
Just out of curiosity, how long did you serve on the Planning Commission?
A long time.
You did two four-year terms?
Four years.
Two four-years. I thought it was you, John Ford.
2010, I believe.
Oh, okay. It's a long time.
Yes.
On the Planning Commission is twice as long.
It's twice as fun.
Okay. So we'll move on to citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments?
We have two.
Okay. Let's do these both at once. Mr. Gifford and Mr. Mahoney.
I'll go first in the interest of time, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. I had a couple of things. One is, a couple of Thursdays ago, November 22nd, the Oregon City Business Alliance had a presentation that was, for the most part, supposed to be about the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. The owner of the property came and gave a presentation. But before he did that, we had a presentation by a number of staff members regarding specifically the Riverwalk Project. The Whiffelaw. It's late. The Riverwalk Project. And I just wanted to give some kudos to the city staff that participated and thank them very much for that. There will be a video of that presentation, which will be out hopefully in another week or two by the time they get it all edited, and we'll have that up on ocbusinessalliance.com. Second thing that I want to talk about briefly is the election results. The mixed bag, I think for, I don't think everybody got everything they wanted. I don't think anybody got everything they wanted. But the one issue that I want to talk about specifically tonight is the police bond measure and why that failed, which I think was possibly the biggest shock to those that knew what was going on, because there was no organized opposition. There's been a lot of rationale as to why that failed, the undervote, and so on. But I wanted to tick off a few of the observations that I had gotten from various sources around the city. One was, that kind of surprised me, that some people were concerned that we should not be using Mount Pleasant School because the school district needs that school. We need more, we need another middle school. And I don't know how to express how far off base that logic could be. The fact that the school district sold it to the city indicates that they don't want it, they didn't need it, and it was a good deal for the city. Why that would, why would they, why would they not want us to use that property was a little beyond me. The wording on the ballot, I did have some other issues with. For example, we did not use the word "police" in the opening title of the ballot. And with all of the campaigning that we did, we said, "Support our police." And I think by far and away, this city does support our police. I don't think there's any question about that at all. But there wasn't that hook word "police" in there. And I think that I might have been the one that helped to mismessage that, and I apologize for that. Issues about property tax was also in the ballot. Before, it was explained that it wasn't going to be an additional fee. I think that some people thought that there was going to be an additional fee that by voting yes on that, that they would pay their fee and they would pay a bond fee. Other people thought that if they voted no on this, that that CCafe fee would go away off of their utility bill. So a no vote meant no fees. And, but possibly the biggest and most, it's not that big, but the issue was that there should not have, that there should have been a vote on the fee, which is contrary to the way it would have worked optimally. It was, it was not something that, I can't explain it very well, but I'm just disappointed that the city didn't realize what a really, really good deal this was for the city, and we're just going to have to go back and do it all again at another expense to our city.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mahoney.
I want to talk to you tonight a little bit about what you already know, and that's public safety. I think that the number-one responsibility of any council or commission to its citizenry is public safety. And I hate to get down on a purely negative note, but I think it bore out, was borne out in Oakland. This thing has shocked the whole nation. And it shocked the nation because somebody fell asleep at the switch and didn't follow through on enforcement of ordinances that were already on the books in terms of safety inspection and issuance of citations, follow through in the courts, and getting that situation safe so that 36 people did not lose their lives. And that is not government at work. And I think that all of us, if we were able to reverse that situation, would, in a heartbeat, do that. So whatever we do as a community, what we've got to do is enforce public safety laws through inspections and enforcement. One of the most public enforcement activities that we take place on a daily note is when we see somebody pulled over and getting a ticket. And they probably get the ticket because they deserved it. And that's an accident that didn't happen, because further on down the road, had they not been pulled over, they may have caused an accident and caused somebody the loss of their life. So that's kind of a negative situation, but it's real. It's real. It's as real as you can get. So I encourage the, to the Commission to step up to the plate and make sure that we enforce our building codes and our zoning codes. That's what we're appointed and elected for. The other thing is, kudos to you people for stepping out ahead of the curve on this transportation mobility study and making the effort to bring everybody to the table and discuss it. We know what the solution is. We just don't have the money. If we had the money, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about it. We'd go out and solve the problem. We know what the solution is. That's, that's just a paper design issue. So anyway, my thoughts go with you on this holiday season, and I wish everybody a happy, happy holiday season. And I'm going to use the word Merry Christmas. I think I can use that. Can I do that? Okay. And I resent the fact that we get along at the Planning Commission, all of us. I don't get along with anybody. Okay? So, there you go.
Get off my lawn. So just one quick thought to Mr. Mahoney. I think, looking back, especially over this last year and a half, our enforcement team and other folks have done exactly what didn't happen in Oakland in at least one fairly public incident. So I think they deserve kudos for making a place that wasn't safe, safe again. So we're going to move on to, everybody okay with the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to make a change. Phil has been sitting in the crowd patiently waiting. So we're going to take 7B first, 16-701, personal services agreement with Downtown Oregon City Association to staff the municipal elevator. This is Mr. John Lewis.
I think it's a report. So this one's, I'll bring it from memory. I didn't get a copy of this one in my packet. So, yeah, we're asked, so the city solicited proposals for elevator operator services, and we received one responsive proposal. If you recall, Five Star's been operating that elevator for the last 25 years, and it's come to a time where they've notified us that they're ready to step back and not provide that service anymore. So we're real happy with the proposal that was submitted by Main Street. We think the proposal Jonathan's in the audience that they've submitted is, was a good one. And we like just about everything that they included in that proposal. They have some unique ideas that we'd like to further discuss as we kind of get down the road with this contract and get kind of the transition between Five Star and the Downtown Organization. But with that, it's pretty straightforward. Their proposal for the services don't change much from what we've done in the past. They're suggesting actually some minor tweaks to make the service even better than it has been. And I think we've got a lot of opportunity for future improvements, which we'll bring before you in 2017.
Just to build on that, authorizing the city manager to execute a personal service agreement, the amount of $371,014.49 with the Main Street Oregon City Incorporated, Downtown Oregon City Association, to provide three years of staffing service at the municipal elevator. The proposal provides new ideas for improving efficiency of operations and increasing personal interaction with the riders in the elevator, and also includes extended hours in the summer event season. Special events will be approved on an as-needed basis when we build an addition to the contract limits and at the unit rates proposed. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Smith.
First of all, I want to say that my partner is
First of all, I want to say that my partner is on the Main Street Board, which I just want to let people know if they have a concern about me weighing in on this conversation.
If your partner's, I've got to think through the definitions in chapter 244 about whether that qualifies as a family member. If the partner does your role in making a decision about whether or award a contract would be a conflict of interest because you're making a decision that would give a contract to someone, so it really, I think there might be some concerns about conflict of interest in terms of making a decision.
Okay. But I do want to at least talk about the elevator in general. I think this is a great opportunity. The elevator is such an iconic part of the city. Downtown's connection to it in the past has been successful. There's so much momentum right now as, Thelma, sorry. As Thelma alluded to earlier, in terms of tourism, we've been working so hard as a community on this. This gives us, as a city, the opportunity to look at the elevator in a different way, to create a synergy that can spread to some of the other local museums and tourists that are coming into town. So I think that this is really exciting. I have a little concern over the 10-minute rest period and I think that's something that can be addressed. And the other thing that I would say is that I hope that this commission in the future, and I would say, one of the, I think in the near future, with your goal session coming up in January, that this contract doesn't address any additional hours. And I think in the near future, whether it's this year or next year or soon after that, I hope sooner, that this commission, or the new commission, talks about the expansion of the elevator hours. My recommendation at some point is that it's open until 10 o'clock every day. And because of the growth in the business downtown and the amount of traffic and the amount of people going between the McLaughlin neighborhood and downtown for restaurants and other things, I think we're getting to a point where that needs to be something to think about, especially in the next few years as we move towards things like the Riverwalk and the connections with the promenade and all of that. So I think that, I guess the reason I bring it up tonight is I'm worried if that's not something that's at a conversation at the next goal session, then it's two years out. And I think that maybe that might be too late. So I'll leave that with you as a, as a bit of advice. I'll probably just abstain from this vote.
Commissioner Shaw?
So, I had a concern about the hours also, especially coming from, this coming from the Downtown Association, because I think they heard about this so much that I thought if they were going to propose a contract, that surely the hours would be extended. So I'm not sure why that wasn't included in there. So, and I don't know if, Jonathan, you're going to come up and talk later on or not, so.
Actually, the main, so we published a request for proposals, advertised it with the hours listed. So Main Street complied with our request for proposals because they didn't want to be, have that a consideration, that they would be considered non-responsive. So they're, they're complying with what we asked.
So they didn't offer maybe a Plan B that if they were to get it or something, but I'm just saying, you know.
Well, there's that which would only delay the decision. So if we had have tried to go back to the drawing board with a different kind of request, then we'd have had to re-advertise and go through that. So we're, we're interested in pursuing those, but we don't want to clutter this decision with, or, or not clutter, but.
Yeah, delay or distract.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to add that kind of a requirement onto this decision.
Okay, good. So it's kind of a good idea because the Downtown Association knows what's going on down there on an immediate basis and can educate that operator, who's going to educate the, the users. And I've noticed that's what's been missing when I've used that elevator. It's just kind of a, you know, when there was a real opportune time there to say, hey, are you going to go here? You might want to try, hey, what are you going to be doing? Why don't you go do this? You know, so there's some education there that can happen. Now, when does this contract expire, the existing one?
January.
End of January.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, that's all I got.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
I'm delighted that the Downtown Association stepped forward with the proposal. I see a lot of synergies with elevator service and what they're trying to do, so that's great. I didn't see in the staff report a comparison of what the current contractor is charging, so can you talk about the context? I mean, what, what they're bidding versus what we're paying now? Is it more, is it less, is it about the same?
You know, it's really very similar. I thought the Downtown Organization took a very reasonable approach. They've got a small increase of about 4%, but if you recall, there's minimum wage increases and, you know, healthcare kinds of concerns like that as well. So, and, and they've actually added some time for a manager to be able to attend some of their, their planning meetings during the week. So I think there's five hours a week that's been added to the, the hours that aren't necessarily hours of operation, but more like staff time hours that someone can actually communicate more with Jonathan about some of that training need that you may talk about. So, yeah, I think it's very similar to what we're seeing now and not, there isn't a big gap between what was before and what is now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ide?
First, I'm on the Downtown Association and similar to Rocky, is there a conflict here for me to be participating in this or?
Downtown Association is a, you're?
I'm a board member.
Okay.
Non-voting though, right? Or?
It's voting member, yeah.
But isn't Downtown Oregon City Association some form of nonprofit?
Is it a nonprofit?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'm going to read, I'm sorry? Thank you.
I'm going to pull back a little bit because a business is specifically defined to include, to exclude a nonprofit. So if in fact it's on the nonprofit, it's not considered a business. Conflict of interest is to the, of a person or business. So, yeah, you can participate and vote. I apologize, I didn't realize Downtown Oregon City is a nonprofit.
Both of us.
Both of you.
Okay.
I was going to get there eventually, so. Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, then, great. I, I think that enhancing the visitor experience there is wonderful and having opportunities for the elevator operator to do just what Brian suggested, you know, making some suggestions for where to eat and, and, you know, having some enthusiasm about Oregon City and, and, you know, sending them to the certain event that's going on. I mean, all those things I think are really important to include in that position. And having the discussion about further hours of operations, I think can be done at a later time, can't they? Yeah. I don't have a, I'm not concerned about it as far as this, this particular contract.
Okay. So Thelma, did you have anything to say? I know you were here for this, so.
Thelma Hagan-Miller, and just what I would have to say is that this has been discussed at the tourism level. Rocky informed us that the contract was coming up for a new outlook because of the company that originally had the contract for the last 25 years that I'm aware of was not going to renew. So I personally feel that this is one of those little niches in the tourism clink out there that we need to take advantage of and we have not been taking advantage of. I've been up and down the elevator where the operator sat there and read a book and never said a word to me. And that's not acceptable. The original operator in the elevator met everybody with a smile, oftentimes with a brochure in her hand, asking questions about what they were going to do. And that's what I would hope to see in the future because that's, they have to be people people. They can't just be an operator of an elevator. That's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Then I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval of 7B 16-701 Personal Services Agreement with Downtown Oregon City Association to staff the municipal elevator.
Seconded by Commissioner Mengeberg, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there any further discussion? Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Ide?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay. Back to the agenda, public hearings, we have PC 16-119, request for continuance of AN 16-0004, annexation of 35.65 acres north of Holcomb Boulevard and west of, west of Winston Drive. Ms. Turway?
Thank you very much. We're requesting a continuance until February 1st of 2017 for this item. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. I will open the public hearing at this point. Is there anybody wishing to testify? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and am ready for a motion. Oh, Commissioner Ide?
One, just one quick question. Does, I was looking on the map, does that create an island?
There's a thin tax lot or it's a property that separates. So, so no, it does not create an island. It sure does look like it, but you have to zoom in quite a bit to tell.
Because, at least I'm looking at the map and all along Winston and Armell, there's all kinds of tax lots there, like 20 houses or something, or lots?
There.
And I'm looking at the, the border, the city limit.
Yeah, there's a thin property that's hard to see on the map and it runs behind the backyard of those properties on Trail Drive. So north of Armell, the side of Armell running up parallel with Trail Drive, there's a thin little piece of property. So it is not a.
Okay. The, the, I'm just not, the map just looks like it's creating this huge.
Sure you can zoom in for her on a different map, right?
About four feet wide, so it's hard to see on this level.
Okay. I'll, I'll believe you.
Good question.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve continuance of AN-160004, PC 16-119.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Ide. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call or roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Ide?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So under general business, we have 16-702 Tri-City Water Environmental Services Digestor Project Recommendation. Mr. Conkle?
Thank you. Last week, we attended a joint work session with the Director of Water Environmental Services as well as the Councils and Commissions from Westland, Gladstone and Oregon City. We were presented the revised digester project at the Tri-City Plant. Essentially, the proposal is to reduce it from two digestors down to one digester, reducing the cost of the project from approximately $56 million to approximately $38 million. The Clarkamas County Board of Commissioners recently created the Water Environmental Services Partnership pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute, Chapter 190, consolidating the assets, operation and maintenance of the Tri-City Service District and the County Service District, Number One, into one entity. Wes is currently designing the improvements for the Tri-City Plant and this will have an impact on the existing rates. The current proposal to construct the one digester along with site improvements will cost approximately $38 million, of which approximately half of that, $18,750, would be equity contributions from the two service districts. And the remaining $18,750 would be financed from a Department of Environmental Quality Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund. The breakdown of the responsibility for the equity contribution as well as the debt service is currently proposed to be 64% from Clarkamas County Service District One and the remaining 36% from the Tri-City Service District. The estimated monthly rate increase for Tri-City to pay for the debt service would be an additional dollar five per equivalent dwelling unit. So the, the County Board of Commissioners has asked the cities to weigh in on this issue. The, at the presentation, you saw several rate options that were presented. And at the Regional Wastewater Advisory Committee, there were some questions from representatives in the Clarkamas County Service District, Number One District, of why this wasn't a 50-50 split or why weren't we building two dig, two digestors at this time instead of one. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that the commission may have on this issue or if you would like to take a position on this that we can provide to the County Board of Commissioners.
At your pleasure. Commissioner Mengeberg?
Well, okay.
First, I'd like to.
You gotta push your button, Commissioner.
I did.
No, I was talking.
First, I'd like to thank staff for organizing the joint meeting of the, all of the various commissions of Gladstone, Westland. I know that wasn't easy, but it was really helpful for all of us to be together, to hear the same information at the same time and get our questions answered. So I really appreciate that effort.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Well, having sat through a number of these regional wastewater meetings in the audience, and I know that this isn't comfortable for anybody except for Wes and the county commissioners part of this probably, but I think as far as what I can tell, we're probably as close as we're going to be able to get. We started out at two digestors and we're down to one because what the thinking is that is, in what, 20 years, that there'll probably be other technologies available and that you, that's why we're not using two digest, two new digestors at this time. So it's uncomfortable, it's, we're in an awkward position and, but I think to move along and whether we believe there's a capacity issue or not, I kind of think there is, but anyway, I'm, I'm, would probably vote for this this evening, so.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm so sick of this topic. Oh, my God. And I keep thinking it's my last Tri-Cities topic and it keeps coming. We're not talking about this at the work session, are we?
No.
Okay. I, I gotta say this, though, in looking at the minutes that I went through before talking about tonight's meeting a little bit, I went back to 2009, my first year on the commission, and I was looking at, because the agreement that entered us into all this mess started in 2008. 2009, we had another couple agreements that came forward that we talked about. And this is what it said, I caught my eye in the minutes. Jim Nacita observed that this was basically just an agreement between the BCC, Board of County Commissions, and the Board of County Commissions. So nothing's changed, except for the fact that we had three cities meet together for the first time to talk about this. And I think that is something I've been waiting for, for a long time. And it shows some progress. And I think that needs to continue. You know, it doesn't matter what we say tonight. It's never mattered what we've said. That's the whole point. If we say anything, you know, I think that the main point is changing what they have proposed all along in terms of the rates. And then to the last minute at the last regional wastewater meeting, have a conversation about maybe changing everything we ever talked about up to that point, I think it's crazy. So, you know, obviously, I don't think it's fair at that point to talk. So, you know, obviously, I don't think it's fair at that point to talk about changing it from a 60-30 to a 50-50 or the amount of money that they talked about, because the discussion at the last regional wastewater meeting was, well, you know, maybe the cities should be paying more. Of course, that came from all of the representatives outside the city, all the cities talking about that, so, you know, if we, if we say anything, it needs to stay with what the whole conversation has been all along, but it doesn't matter what we say.
Well, I certainly agree with you on that point. It's been an exercise in futility since the beginning, and the political maneuverings by the current county commission to form this thing in such a way as that it wasn't referable, which is why it was done as an emergency, so the voters didn't even have an opportunity. It's kind of a done deal at this point. I am buoyed a little bit by some of the comments coming out of Chair-Elect Bernard and Commissioner-Elect Hubbardson, that their intent is to have the cities have a seat at the governing table of this new organization. While I have a serious trust deficit with the county commission, I am hopeful that they will fulfill what they say they will fulfill, and that the organization over the next 18 months will change into something that has direct representation from the various cities on the actual governing board. We'll have to wait and see about that, and if that doesn't occur, then there are political ways to deal with that as well. So, if I had not had those conversations over the last couple of weeks, I would have come in here and said, "We should just say no because we can, and it won't matter anyway," which is to Commissioner Smith's point. In this case, right now, I think the commissioners-elect and the new county commission deserves a bit of a honeymoon to see if they're going to keep their words. So, I'm going to say that, at least for me, that we should say that we support this piece of the digester project, based on the statements that those commissioners have made, that they intend to achieve some sort of representation for the cities on the governing board of whatever this thing is. Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Sewer service is just one of those basic services that our residents expect us to provide, and a dollar five doesn't seem like a huge monumental increase and a huge burden to our citizens, so I, the one concern would be, is there opportunity to set up some kind of a hardship fund for those that it might be a problem for? And the fact that the split is in our favor is at least something, so I'm with Dan that we support it.
Commissioner Shaw?
And you're correct, Mayor Holliday, that the, we've always been after a change of governance, and without the county commissioners being the, being the overseer of this whole thing, we thought by them releasing them of that duty, and then that Regional Wastewater Committee having all the electeds on there, those are the folks that should be running this operation, because they're, they would be in charge of any of the capital improvements that are going to happen to their city. They would be the voices, so just by getting rid of those, the county commissioners, so that's what we tried to do at all the times, was have a change of governance, and that's exactly what you're talking about, so.
Well, now the county commission is signing for themselves in four places instead of three.
That's right, so. Yeah, it got better, didn't it?
So, is there a, is there a motion?
Is that what we're looking for on this, or just a recommendation?
They want a recommendation. Do you want to form a motion, or you want a head nod, or what do you want there?
A little hands up, or what?
You know, I think what I'm hearing is that we have a motion that the city commission supports the proposed split, 64 percent CCSD One, 36 percent Tri-City Service District for the construction of the one digester and related infrastructure.
And with the expectation that the county will follow through on its governance changes?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Ide, seconded by, seconded by Commissioner Mengeleberg. Is there any further discussion?
You couldn't have waited this till January. I have to support the county tonight.
Feel free to vote no. Feel free. No further discussion, call or roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Yes.
Commissioner Ide?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. My mouse is broken.
You've got a broken mouse.
Okay. All right, so is everybody okay with the consent agenda?
We have one extra.
I'm sorry, we have a walk-on item tonight...
What?
...that we should have announced during the adoption of the agenda.
It's a Public Works Addments Change Order Request for a project.
Quickly.
So, this is Change Order Number Three for the 15th Street Waterline Replacement Construction Project. We're asking an authorized $72,141.49 change order with trench line excavation, so most of that change order is related to additional trench patching beyond what we'd estimated in the project. So, it's work that we've directed them to do, they've already done, we're trying to get authorization for, actually, that paving item and all the unit quantity estimates, so we, there's some that went under, some that went over, but overall, we're, that project is over that. So, the prior change orders were for, the bigger chunk was for some additional work that we wanted them to do with the sanitary sewer line, so we found a sanitary sewer line beyond the limits of the work that we were asking them to do in the contract that needed to be replaced. We found that as a part of the, in the TV inspection work that we did for the sewer line section that we had in the contract. So, this piece is mostly about paving, but prior change orders, just a reminder, were about the addition of, I think, close to 300 feet of sewer line, so that's where we're at. Project is still with, under what the engineer estimated the project to be, and this is a low bid contract, so we've, we've had, this has been actually a very good contract and a very good contractor, so our extras are at a, they're relatively low.
So, we're still in budget?
Still in budget, yes. We've got funding for this, and it's really a matter of trying to finish that out.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the $71,000...
Just Change Order Number Three works.
Second.
Change Order.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call or roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Ide?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. And I have to say, that's the fastest second on record for Commissioner Smith. Okay, so, once again, is there anything, anybody wants to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Mengeleberg. Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Ide?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So, communications, Mr. Manager?
You all begin with some updates from Mr. John Lewis. So, tonight, I want to give you an update on this alternate mobility target study, so I'm going to go through a quick presentation on that, sorry. What am I supposed to do here?
Are you shocked?
Yeah, a little. We cut, we cut most of the credits out. Somehow, I thought that you and the city manager discussed this, these agenda items, and I'm just clear to go.
He doesn't talk to me about what he's going to bring up in communications. Let me ask you a question. So, is this something we could do in January?
Uh, no.
Why?
Well, we can, we need this project to move forward, and we need, we need the city commission to recommend one participant sit on our community advisory committee, so we need to get that decision from you tonight.
So, who's the participant?
That's, that's what we're asking you to...
You mean, you want somebody from the commission to sit on it?
That's right, that's right. So, this alter, this, this update is...
But it starts like next week, right?
That's right.
So Frank's off the hook just because of time.
I'm also off the hook.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I'll just go through this real quickly, give you an update about the project, and then tell you about what the comm... Really, okay. Okay, so this is, this is really a transportation study. You know, we're, this is related to Beaver Creek and Highway 213. There's more corridor than just that intersection, but this is a study to look for transportation solutions for that intersection that would help reduce congestion and make the intersection safer. So, I'm going to go through these, basically, the DSP suggested we needed to do this kind of study, where it committed us to doing it sooner than where we're at today, so we're moving forward with it. It's definitely going to help us get to where we want to be with the Beaver Creek Concept Plan and all the development around the community college, so it's a, it's definitely time-intensive, and we need to get started with it. So, we need, we're, we formed a technical advisory group, which is mostly staff. We need a community advisory group, which is a variety of stakeholders, which would include a commission, city commission member, to sit through three meetings, and that will happen over the next five months. So, really, we're looking for feasible, reasonable options for capacity and safety, and we're also probably going to be looking at a different standard by which we measure, or maybe not how we measure, but, but that we're willing to accept, that the state is willing to accept for congestion in that intersection.
Okay.
Okay, we're looking for good advice from you folks. This is the folks that are on the technical advisory committee. It's mostly staff from all the agencies involved, Oregon City, ODOT, Clackamas Community, I mean, Clackamas County and Metro. This thing's slow. TriMet will also be involved in that. Again, it's about five minutes, five months' worth of meetings. We'd hope to get through the, the community advisory committee stuff in April, and really get it adopted by the Oregon Transportation Commission, which is really the highest level in the state of this kind of approval, so, and hope to do that within a year. Again, remember, we just need you to be at meetings and listen and participate, that's really the main point of that, and there's three meetings, December 15th is the first one. It is an aggressive schedule, February 2nd, and then April 20th.
Are these meetings on the same day of the week?
I'll have to look at the calendar, I'm not sure.
First one's a Thursday. Here, I'll look.
So, while we're looking, while we're looking at that, um, let's see.
They're all Thursdays?
They're all Thursdays?
Okay, good. Because that could make a difference for some people.
So, this is the community advisory group. It involves a wide cross-section of our community, and includes people both inside and outside. As you know, a lot of folks outside the, outside the city use that intersection as well, so they're stakeholders, so, but really, the, the main reason for bringing this to you tonight was to try, try to get someone from the city commission appointed, so that we could get them information before the 15th, the meeting on the 15th.
Okay.
There's, I have a question. There, there's some, it says a representative from the, is there a school representative? There's the college.
Uh, community college, um, I don't see, yeah, no school, oh, two from the college, right.
There should be a school district, you know, from the high school or...
Well, from the district, I mean, the transportation department is there.
Transportation is there, the high school. I, I mean, I don't know if we have the ability to do that, but I think it'd be nice to have a...
We can reach out to them. We have some vacancies that we need to fill anyway, so we can reach out to the school district.
Okay. Commissioner Mengeleberg?
I'd be willing to volunteer if nobody else wants to.
So, Commissioner Mengeleberg is officially appointed to the community advisory group. Moving on.
So, I don't have to do this next one, tell me, that one definitely doesn't matter. Um, Ms. Turway will give three quick updates.
All right. We received the decision from the Landes Board of Appeals on the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Readoption, and they supported the city commission's approved plan. I recognize a lot of the hard work from Pete Walter, one of our planners, Kerry Richter, Bill Kabizman, as well as Alita Froman-Gowrich, our city engineer, so, good job.
So, does that mean that it can't be appealed again?
No. The appeal, it can be appealed to the Court of Appeals, that appeal date is December 13th. It has not been appealed yet.
So, that's the deadline for them to file the appeal?
Correct.
Okay. Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed until the 14th.
Okay, and then the next update is that we were awarded $100,000 from the Metro Equitable Housing Grant, and that will take us a little bit, over a year's worth of work, to look at housing in our community and make sure that we have opportunities for housing for all of our residents. So, more to come on that.
Yay.
And then the last update is that we had a Friends of Trees planting event on Saturday, and it's a partnership with the city and Friends of Trees, and in this partnership, we were able to increase our urban canopy by planting about 100 trees, and so we had participants from the McLaughlin River Crest and Barclay Hills Neighborhood Association, and it was a really nice community event for people to get out there, meet their neighbors, and at the end of the day, we were all hosted by a lunch that was provided from all the neighborhood associations for all the volunteers and workers. So, it was a really nice event, it went very well, and we will look forward to doing it again next year.
And my updates include, for those, as we enter into the holiday season, Christmas season here, we have a Salvation Army Angel Tree Program that we, that we participate in. The tree is located in the Public Works Lobby area. Please select a tag for a child in need, purchase a gift, and return it unwrapped gift to the Public Works Department, and they'll be picked up on December 19th. So, hopefully, folks, if you're looking for a place to do some gift giving, it'd be a great one to participate in. I'd like to congratulate the End of the Oregon Trail and Visor's Information Center, was made Oregon Business Magazine's 2017 100 Best Fan Favorite Destinations List. Mr. Phil Lewis attended the awards luncheon today with representatives from Clackamas County, so congratulate to them, doing a great job down there, and what they're doing at the End of the Oregon Trail and with tourism, as we continue to improve that here in Oregon City. Last but not least, my pleasure to present to the commissioners the six-month goals update, so this is for the work that we and the staff here have completed from July through December, in accomplishing the biennial goals that the city commission has adopted. So, this is the six-month update of the progress and the status of those, the work that we're doing to complete those goals, and that...
You can have somebody send that to me electronically?
Certainly.
Okay.
So, that concludes my updates for tonight.
Okay. Communications from the commission? Have you got anything?
Just real briefly, I attended the downtown association meeting, or cleanup, on November 19th, and we power washed sidewalks and washed windows and all kinds of things, so there was, a few of us showed up for that, hope to do some more someday soon. Went on a tour of the mill on 18th of November, which was just fascinating once again. It never ceases to amaze me, and I always see new, new and different things every time we go, and there's many more things that I did, but you know, I think that's the highlight.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, this kind of got brought up just this afternoon, but Francesca Anton, I believe her name, Anton, lives over here on Second and Promenade. There's some roses there, and I think Mr. Lewis, John Lewis, might be aware of this, because Public Works is, Public Works is going to do some work right there, and there's some roses there that are actually 1905, come to find out, and she was kind of looking for people or places to put these at, so they don't get thrown away and stuff. So, I kind of sent her a note, said, "Well, great to have at least one of them to put maybe by the Herman Tinger House or something at 1905." So, she's checking to see if she's got, how many she's got left and stuff, so we're going to be working on that a little bit, so. Let's see, attended... Let's see, attended the chamber meeting, which happened to be at the library. That was the, one of the most well-attended chamber events they had, and that was a great, great meeting for that. And the Riverwalk Design Exposition turned out well. I think they had four hundred and some people there for that. Ben James Ribbon Cutting over here at the new building on the bluff, and OCBA Legacy Project Update. And Mayor Holliday and myself and Commissioner Smith are on the South Fork Water Board, and we approved the master plan for the water department last Thursday, Wednesday, last Wednesday, I think it was?
Thursday.
So, that's done. And then CIC with Chair Will Height there, and then OC Together was Tuesday night, and those are the folks that are trying to do their best to eliminate marijuana and other drugs from the high schools best they can. So, the last thing I wanted to do was, you know, we had that wastewater joint meeting, it was the last Thursday or, when was that?
Doesn't matter.
At the, at the library, and, well, it does matter, because I wanted to recognize Mr. Conkle here, because he's the one that put that together, and I know somebody else took credit for that that night, but, because this happened, this all started at the last regional wastewater meeting, and when Wes gave their presentation about how this was all going to happen, at the end of the meeting, a few of us were standing around talking about this, and Mr. Conkle said, you know, "Let's have, let's bring it to the city commission to discuss," and then we started talking about, "Well, you know, it'd be great if we got Gladstone and, and Wes Lynn together in on this, and we all have a joint meeting." And Tony's one that put their, Mr. Conkle put that all together, and got the times down and all this stuff. There was a lot of work, and I just want to thank him for putting that all together, because that was, he's the guy that did it, and, because somebody else got the credit for it, so, thank you for doing that.
My pleasure, and I want to thank my staff, because they assisted. It was seamless while I was on vacation. They ran with it and got everything else lined up while I was gone.
I was going to say, it smelled a lot like Katie to me, but.
Mr. Parno, Katie's, everybody scrambled to bring multiple jurisdictions together in a very short time.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aside from several meetings that I attended with other commissioners, I did attend the third and final transportation forum that Metro put on as the city's impact representative, and this one focused on funding, and they're trying to build momentum around a regional funding package, whatever that might look like, because we certainly can't count on the federal government, and probably not on the state government to help us fund these big projects, so more to come on that, but there was a full room and a lot of leaders, both elected and volunteer and nonprofit, trying to pull together on something big. So, it was interesting, and I, I think it's a worthy project.
Commissioner Smith?
I just have a few things.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. Remember your party we're going to.
Eric's sitting way in the back, I forgot about him. And Mo is, well, I, yeah, I, I gave them each of their cards, and I want to thank them. I appreciate working with you for this, well, for a few years, and then some of you for longer, and, and I'm so thankful that we have an economic development director, we, or manager, we, we talked about that as far back as two thousand eight, two thousand nine, ten, and before that, but to see some of these things that we've been talking about so much in this town, the, the creation of, essentially, the creation of Downtown Association started all around that time, the creation of the One of Falls Heritage Area Coalition started all around that time, and so having an economic, economic development manager now and the downtown in place, and, and the conversation on the commission about tourism and all these things that are happening in the elevator, we're at the moment right now to really take the next step in terms of tourism, and I'm excited about this commission's support of that and into the future. Mo, congratulations on building an amazing library, and I will talk to you about that more later. Denise Kai, or, excuse me, Denise Conrad, Scott Archer, and I have to thank Larry Potter, because he was one of the people that put up with phone calls and phone calls and phone calls from me for years about the Irma Tinger House, and Christina Robertson Gardner. And I want to remind people, the play at the High School Miracle on Thirty-Fourth Street opened tonight, it was their opening night, because school's canceled already for tomorrow, I'm assuming the play is canceled tomorrow. So, Friday and Saturday night, if the weather is back to normal, please go see the play on Friday or Saturday night. It's great. And I want to thank all of the people at South Fork Water, all the people that I worked with for eight years on the South Fork Water Board, and the commissioners that I worked with from, or, excuse me, counselors that I worked with from Wes Lynn over the years, and Mayers, and John Collins, a class act, and a good friend and an amazing manager. So, thank you.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. So, there were a couple things that were talked about tonight, and I want to just quickly do this. I had a discussion with my insurance agent out in Camby, who came to Oregon City to have dinner, and they drove around, drove around, finally found a parking place in a private lot. The lot signs, parking, no parking signs are hidden by the front edges of cars, so he was in a slot that didn't have a sign, and went to dinner and came out, and his car was towed. So, he came to me with this question, so I would like, on a future agenda, for us to discuss some kind of signage requirement for private lots that tow vehicles, that those signs be a certain height off the ground, or something else like that, so that people have a legitimate warning that they're not parking, that they're parking somewhere that they shouldn't be and they could possibly be towed, because it's, I, I think, I think for Ryan, it cost him three hundred and fifty or four hundred bucks to get his car back. Fortunately, they towed it to Camby, because that's where the storage lot was, so at least he was headed home. The other thing, it's been, I've had several people come to me about over the last month or so, is the issue of the, of the sunken manhole covers on Molalla Avenue going uphill.
Yeah.
I, I reached out to, and I apologize, Mr. Lewis, but I reached out directly in an email to Martin Montalvo. Apparently, during the construction of, the reconstruction of the road, the, the heights weren't exactly right. They had to order extension rings for those manhole covers therein, and we're just looking for a particular time to install those, so sometime in the next couple of weeks, those bumps will go away on Molalla Avenue. Beyond that, I don't have, I mean, I've done a bunch of stuff, but I don't think it's, it's worthy of, you know, jumping out there with that, with maybe the exception of, of going down and, and meeting Santa Claus and, and doing the tree lighting. That's always a, an enjoyable experience. So, with that, unless there is anything else for the good of the order, then we are adjourned into executive session.
What?